Okay, going to call this meeting in order. First item on the agenda is roll call.
Alderman Arnold.
Here.
Alderman Skelly.
Here.
Alderman Headley.
Here.
Alderman Cherry.
Here.
Alderman West.
Here.
Alderman Totten.
Here.
During the corner.
Next item on the agenda is an invocation by Pastor Rankery from Cross Creek Baptist Mission, and then followed by a pledge of allegiance from Alderman West.
Let's bow and pray. Lord God, we want to thank you for a gorgeous day you've given to us, as you help us many people who struggle through this heat. And while I see no rain in sight, I pray for it in faith believing that you know how much we need and you'll send it to us. I pray for the agenda tonight, those who have been elected officials by the people of this town, that you'll help them make the decisions that is the best for our future, remembering our children and even people who are traveling through, and those who work hard and pay taxes. And God, I just pray that everything that's done tonight will be done in a way that will honor and glorify you. And I ask my special friend tonight who received that devastating news today, God strengthen him and his family, and we thank you so much for America. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, not a God, and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next item is the approval of agenda.
Yes, Mayor, we actually have one thing that we want to change on the agenda. Another presentation, we're going to have a presentation from the developers' marketing group tonight. Mr. Martinet is actually going to come back on the 23rd of July and give that same presentation. So he drew the...
Do I have a motion to amend the agenda? Motion, Alderman, to amend the agenda by the second.
Second.
Second, Alderman Totten. Any discussion? All therapists, aye?
Aye.
All of us say aye. Agenda is approved, amended, and approved. Next item on the agenda is citizens' participation. We ask the citizens to come forward to the microphone and speak, and please give your name and address for the record. We do have a public hearing tonight on the agenda. If you're here in regards to speaking on that, we have a public comment section within the public hearing that will have you come up and speak for that. So this will be for other items, not regarding the public hearing. So, members, just to board, step forward.
Yes, Nancy Totten, 309 Front Street. I would like to let you all know, our young lady is here tonight. We went to the racetrack. It was so much fun, but I want you to know it was nice having people from Fort Val, Iowa, a mother and son came to speak how well she did, and some lady from New Mexico. And I really enjoyed listening, and we're in the country because she promised to sing for us on one of the nights after she gets back home from her tour. And she did an excellent job, and we even had a young man, and I don't know who was more nervous, her or the young man telling her how well she sang. But it was really something to behold, to know that we come together and supported a very talented young lady. And around someone they've been your leading?
First of all, I just wanted to come and say thank you to everyone who put forth their efforts and contributions to my goal of getting heard at the San Diego Honor Choir. And I just really hope to represent Grand Valley as well as I can abroad this year. So just thank you. And I'm leaving on the 29th, and I'll be going to Pennsylvania and touring Europe, different countries, and staying there in one of the great historical places. And without all of your guys' help, I wouldn't have been able to do it. So thank you so much.
Thank you. We've been in the hospital right now, so... But another thing, neighbor helping neighbor attitude, we're going to have a community for our pantry. We're asking everyone that lives at the city limits of Grand Valley will get in free with a donation of shampoo, soap, toilet paper, stuff that some people can't get. And we're hoping they'll have buckets there, but you'll be invited to stay for the races. And if you have a city address, just bring in your pantry goods so we can get ready for the fall and winter, because as most people know, the pantries are getting hit pretty hard. So Friday and Saturday night, so there's a night there for some of it. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to address the board?
I'll make it quick.
Kind of. When you guys said that you hired someone to go around and milk the empty lots in town that they don't ever do anything with, is that all of them in town?
Any of them?
Because I have seen that's never been touched. I know that it's not raining and it's not growing anymore, but, you know...
Ken, do you want to address the process that would go by on that?
Yeah, I mean, our codes officer goes around and he witnesses grass that's over the limit. He'll come back and send a notice of violation to that property. And they have 10 days to pay. If they pay within that time, we consider contract.
Not just residential, but I'm talking about, you know, just...
Undeveloped tracks is a little different. Yeah, they have 20 foot straight, but yeah, it's the same way.
Because I noticed two or three out on this weekend. I mean, it's really hot. So I didn't know if you did that too. I knew you did residential.
I think typically it's really try to concentrate on the ones like residential, the ones right next to houses.
Oh, yeah. Oh, no, I got a Myon House Commission. Okay. Do we have an ordinance on any kind of certain dog that you could have in the city limits? I know years ago that had been talked about.
Back when they were, when a lot of communities were looking at the dangerous dog ordinances, I think it was very briefly talked about, but they're not aware.
Right. I didn't know if you did anything about it. Because there's going to be a problem in my neighborhood. These nice people that just moved in had a pit bull that has now jumped his fence three times and went after my neighbor's dog. So we tried to be nice with the lady. We had kids come out, and she even just told him off.
Have we had animal control out there yet?
Yes.
Okay.
Kids there the other day.
Start that process, then.
Yes. But I just wanted you to know.
Okay.
Because she wasn't a nice lady. And she's telling all of us to keep our dogs in the house because hers is going to get ours.
The dog's out, call animal control.
It's vicious. It really is. Okay, got that one. I noticed on the E packet at the end, they showed Snidamar and 40 Highway. What are they going to do there?
Ryan, anyone address that, MoDOT project?
Yeah, we've actually got a, MoDOT is going to be installing a turn lane on the south side of 40 Highway past Snidamar.
Oh, okay.
It's an agreement that we came with, MoDOT, over a year ago. It's supposed to be part of the 40 Highway overlay project, which will be happening after I-70s, hopefully this summer. So it's supposed to be at, I think it's about 160 feet.
Well, I noticed the different changes, and I thought, man, that'll help. But I didn't know when they were going to start that.
Yes, I would say late summer.
Late summer? I'm not going to hold you to that, though.
It was only spring last year.
See? I told you.
It's MoDOT, so...
Yeah, I know. You keep telling me it's MoDOT. Okay. And I guess this will go to you or Ken. Who decides what streets in our city gets asphaltated each year and how that process works?
It's part of the CIP process that planning is only important for all neighborhoods. So, hotholes, that sort of thing, and we actually go out and inspect the streets and we rate the roads. We keep track of that paper, it was a program that we have. But for large projects, it's actually rated as the severity of the entire road segment and from what the rating is on that. We stepped on CIP.
Well, I know that it was in a paper that you're doing half of Cross Creek this year and the other half next year. Do you just do one neighborhood each year?
That's all we do for it. We had $130,000, so we should have put this over lace. The best way we could do it was that project was $260,000, so we hope we split it in half projects.
Okay. I just didn't know how that worked.
One issue you run into is a lot of our infrastructure was built around the same time. It all starts failing at the same time, so...
Well, yeah. I mean, mine has started to do that. So we put in a new driveway, well then, you know, I have this much room between my curb and the road because it all ended up. Well, then Rick got ahold of somebody, and they came out and put asphalt in there so, you know, nobody would fall. Well, now it's starting to come out again. So I just, I didn't know how that worked. But thank you. Oh, and I have one thing to say at the end. You have one officer that patrols my neighborhood, and I know exactly when he is on duty because he sits on R.G.Y.'s and he catches every car and he goes down there and rode 50 miles an hour. So would you tell him? Thank you. Yes?
Anyone else wish to address the board?
Chuck Johnson, 611 Cross Creek. I'd like to be in town next meeting. I know you're getting ready to talk about citizens' comments. And a couple things I want to say now is, it seems to me that requiring to sign in, all of that, the only potential that has is to limit the number of people that can talk. I don't think they're limiting the number of people that sign in. It's just people that get here late that can't sign in, or people that the thought comes to them during the comments, they'll be able to get up there. I see no purpose out of it to limit the people that can possibly speak. And then the subjects they can speak on, the Aldermen get a time to comment at the end of meetings. Their time isn't restricted, isn't restricted what they can say. They've used it to promote people, promote businesses, everything else that's limited to the citizen. They don't know why the citizens can't speak as openly as they were again. So to me, it's just to try and limit what people can say is not communicating with people.
Anyone else wish to address the board?
Johnny Sam's Willie, H20 Ryan Road. Thank you, Chuck, for your comments. In the examiner, I was kind of confused, and I'm asking for clarification. It says that considering the speaking of public meetings, there was a quote saying there has been no complaints about, from the public. Well, Chuck complained last week, so there is one complaint. Other people, I talked to me, have complained. But then in the next paragraph, it says, "The public feels like we're squelching input." Well, that sounds like a contradiction to there was no complaints. So if the public feels like we're squelching input, that was a quote, so was that a complaint? I want to get clarification on that. And then if there's going to be no repetition, then does that mean if someone repeats themselves because they're trying to explain it again, they're going to be asked not to repeat? If there's no debate, doesn't that kind of ruin the whole, the whole reason why we're here, to get people to speak? And if there's no questions, why even come? If we can't even ask questions, what's the purpose of a meeting? If we can't get clarification and we can't ask questions? So I would ask that that would be looked into also. Thank you for your time.
Anyone else wish to address the board? Say no, move on to the next item, which is public hearing. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing regarding voluntary annexation for Michael and Alexa Barton. I was going to kind of explain the process a little bit, we're going to go through here tonight. Everyone who wishes to speak will have the opportunity to speak. Again, we ask when that time comes that you come forward to the podium, state your name and address for the record. During your time speaking, that should, your time speaking should be related to the annexation, not anything else that, not related to the annexation, only things related to the annexation at that time. We ask that when you come up and speak, that everything that you have to say at that point, you say it one time, because we might have several people. So we don't want, you know, just keep sitting down and come backups and not come backups. We ask that you do everything the first time you come up. You'll have a chance to address myself and the board. You can ask questions at that point. But we will address all questions at, after everyone has that opportunity to speak. So we won't address questions after every, each person speaks. We'll address them all at the ends, and we'll have, we have city staff and consultants here who direct the questions to the correct staff or consultants. Aldermen will also have a chance to ask questions at that point. And just kind of give the order of business. We have a presentation from our outside consultants. They have to speak first to tell us what they found. Then we have an opportunity for Michael and Alexa Barton to speak. Following that, we'll have public, the public comments section. After the public comment, we may need to have a short little recess to kind of make sure we have all the questions gathered that need to be addressed, where we didn't miss any, that we feel needed to be addressed. We may have a short two or three minute recess there to make sure all of us have all the questions right to, to this right person. After that, then we'll have the board discussion, at which time we will address any question that we're brought up, that the board feels relevant to answer, or I feel myself needs to be addressed. So first of all, I would turn it over to then, to our outside consultants to speak on what they found.
Good evening, Board and Mayor. My name is Saban Yanez with CFS Engineers. We are an engineering firm that has had different duties involving different projects for the city over the last few years. Our address is 9229 Ward Parkway, Kansas City, Missouri, 64114. We were requested by city staff to take a look at some of the details around, surrounding the voluntary annexation. We have brought on board a senior planner, community planner, who has been, who I've worked with for a number of years. Her name is Jackie Carlson. She's here, and she'll address some of the comments as she dug into the details of this on your behalf or on the staff's behalf. Jackie's been a planner since 2003 in various roles, both on the public sector side, in the consultant role, and now with the YDOT Economic Development Council in Kansas City, Kansas. The role that she's done, again, we've worked with her for many, many years as a community planner, and had good experience. And with that, I will let her address a memo that she provided on our behalf that we have since provided to staff in our, in our review of the circumstances around the annexation. So with that, Jackie.
Good evening. Can you hear me okay? As Saban said, my name is Jackie Carlson, and I've been doing planning since 2003. And Saban had asked me to review this as an independent planner to see what my findings would be on this particular case. So when we look at voluntary annexation, I really base this on the Missouri State statutes, and that statute, I'm sorry, section 71.12.
Can you hear me? Speak up a little bit, please.
Is that better? No?
I don't know yet.
Can you hear me now?
No.
Can you get over there and bring it up here?
So as I said, this is based on the Missouri State statutes for voluntary annexation, and that is section 71.012.
Still can't hear it.
We can't hear you back there.
They know what you're, can you turn around and talk to us? They know what's going on.
Is that better? Yeah. Okay. Thank you. Okay, so I will start over for the sake so everyone can hear. As Saban said, my name is Jackie Carlson. I have been doing planning since 2003, and Saban had asked me to come aboard to review this as an independent planner to see what my findings would be on this particular case. When I reviewed this, I really looked at the Missouri State statutes, and that's section 71.012. And those statutes state that there are really three items that need to be reviewed and be in compliance with, in order to approve a voluntary annexation. And those three items are, one, the area to be annexed is compact and contiguous to the existing city limits; two, the annexation is reasonable and necessary to the proper development of the city; and number three, the city can furnish normal municipal services within a reasonable time. So again, those are the three items that I reviewed this application upon. I'll just go through those. The first one, the area to be annexed is compact and contiguous to the existing city limits. The proposed annexation does meet this requirement. It is located right adjacent to the existing city limits. The 12 acre parcel, the entire north side, abuts the city limits, so it is contiguous. In terms of compactness, you can see that the property is a square piece of property. There is no long stretches of land such as a road or a railroad that is connecting it to the city. It is right adjacent to it. So if the city limits were to be extended, it would create a clean and contiguous property line. One end up with, with a kind of a flat lot situation. The second one, the annexation is reasonable and necessary to the proper development of the city. For this one, it's obviously a little bit more subjective, and there isn't a lot of criteria in the state statutes. So the key item for this is to look at the community's comprehensive plan. As you're probably aware, your comprehensive plan specifically states that the plan will serve as a guide for the future growth and development of the city and reflects the values of the people of the community. So this is really what I based this particular criteria on is, is meeting the comprehensive plan, because that's really what the citizens have said they want for the future of their community. As I look through your comprehensive plan, there were several items that I noted that this annexation does conform with. The first is the growth boundaries and land use. If you look at figure 4.1, which is on page 27 of the comprehensive plan, the future land use map clearly identifies that the property to be annexed is inside the city's future city limits. The future land use map also shows that the property should be used as a single-family residential. From what I understand of the application, that is the purpose of the annexation, is that they would like to be within the city limits to construct a single-family home. So based on that, we can see that the annexation does meet both the future growth boundaries as identified on the future land use map and the future land use map in terms of choosing a single-family residential. Second, development patterns. When we look at these, the comprehensive plan specifically talked about doing development that is adjacent to an existing development. We don't want to do what they call leapfrog development, where we have here, we're extending sewers a long distance and then having another development. So obviously, as I said, this property abuts the Ryan Meadows subdivision, so it is right next to an existing development. Services can easily be extended, so we meet the criteria for the development pattern. I would also point out that, as I looked at the aerial photography, I noticed that Cross Creek Street was stubbed at the property line. This indicates to me that there was an intent, intent at some point to extend development into this particular area. So based on that, I would assume that this property will develop, whether it's within the city limits or outside the city limits. So I would make the argument that it necessitates the need for this property to be within the city limits, because the city wants to have control over that development pattern, because the only access to that property is through Cross Creek Street. So whatever development would occur there would have a transportation impact on the community's residential neighborhoods. And so bringing it into the city limits would allow the city to review any potential development that would occur there. As I stated, what we understand is a property owner is looking to build a single-family home, so that impact would be pretty minimal. But if it wasn't brought in, there would be no control from the city review standpoint. Also, the comprehensive plan talks extensively about preserving the community's small-town feel. When I think of a small-town feel, where I grew up, a very small rural town in Iowa, I think about the fact that we had a lower intensity of land use as well as lower density. And for me, lower density is more of a single-family residential, as well as as I started getting up to the, to the fringes of the community, there's more properties who are on larger lots. If we think about what the property owner is anticipating to do with this property, it would create a transition from a more conventional kind of single-family subdivision in the Ryan Meadows to a large lot rural subdivision that would then transition into the rural areas of the county. So by doing this annexation, it does help preserve some of that small-town community feel that Grand Valley has. Also, the comprehensive plan talks about housing diversity. When I looked at the aerial photography and I looked at the existing land use map within the comprehensive plan, I noticed that Grand Valley does have a lot of kind of what they would consider single-family, kind of typical subdivisions, about maybe a 10,000 acre lot. This lot is going to be a lot larger, as I said, it's going to have a more rural residential type feel to it. So this is going to help create some housing diversity as opposed to additional subdivisions that are mainly just the single-family homes on a kind of a cul-de-sac subdivision feel. Also, open space. The comprehensive plan emphasizes the importance of parks, open space, and preserving natural features. As I stated before, because the property owner is considering doing a single-family home on 12 acres, it's going to have a rural residential feel that is going to create more open space. Obviously, that will be private open space, but will contribute to what the comprehensive plan is talking about in terms of parks and recreation and open space and natural amenities. Finally, the third item that I said that is within the state statutes is that the city can furnish normal municipal services within a reasonable time. When we look at this, basically every service is going to be available almost immediately at the time of annexation. As I've stated several times, because the property is adjoining to the Ryan Meadows subdivision, there is sewer within the area. There is also water, even though that is not provided by the city in this area, it's provided by Public Water District 17. Additionally, the parks and recreation and police protection are other services that the city provides in terms of police protection, because it already has street access. Should it be brought into the city, the police would have immediate access to the area. Parks and recreation, as we know, oftentimes communities create parks and recreational amenities that are for broader basis, such as if you live in the county, if you live in the city, if you're a visitor, you oftentimes get to utilize those amenities. So it's fair to say that the property owner potentially already has access to those amenities, and so if they were to be brought in, they would have access immediately. Thus, all municipal utilities are available within a reasonable time. And I should note that because everything is basically to the property line, any extensions would be at the property owner's expense. They'll likely have to extend a private sewer to connect to that main, and that will be at the property owner's expense. In conclusion, as I stated, there are three items that state statute says that we should meet when looking at a voluntary annexation. The first is that the property is compact and contiguous to existing city limits. The annexation is reasonable and necessary to the proper development of the city, and that all municipal services can be provided to the area within a reasonable time. Based on my analysis, I feel that the application does meet all three of those items, and I would recommend approval of this annexation. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have at this time.
I think we'll hold the questions to the spot. We're going to ask the questions. Thank you. Okay, next item then will be an opportunity for the petitioners, Michael and Alexa Barton, to speak if they would like to speak.
Mayor, Board of Aldermen, thank you very much for looking at this request this evening. My husband and I, Mike and I, really don't have any comments at this time or any questions for the board. Just appreciate you taking a look at all of the information that is provided in the application that we submitted to the city, and appreciate the helpful staff.
And next item will be public comments. Again, we ask that you come forward to the microphone and state your name and address for the record.
Yes, my name's Dennis Romines, 708 South Buckton Carson Road, Old Road, Missouri.
Can you state that again, please?
Dennis L. Romines, Ro-R-O-M-I-N-E-L-S, 7008 South Buckton Carson Road. Comments to her study? Did you do any studying of the rock that's underneath that hill to run a line in? At that particular time, when they started building Ryan Meadows, you ought to see my neighbor's house, and you ought to see my house. They've got to, they dynamite or whatever it is to get through that rock pile. You talked about a big... You talked about a big mess. My house has got cracks in it, it's celled, there's nothing there but big rocks. It's what you've got, I'm talking about here. Come up there and dig, try to show. It's going to be a bad mess. And Joe, my ex-neighbor, he called them over there and he was going to do something about it, and it's what they told him, the engineer, and they wanted to know if you had any pictures before they started blasting. Well, how many people, you don't take pictures before they build, you don't go to blow your house up. But there's cracks all over the place, and that's one thing that scares me about this. It's not going to be easy to follow holes up there on that hill. And then the other thing, I went back over there in the housing district, there's 52 to 62 vacant lots still there in Ryan Meadows. Once they get those lots built, you realize how much water, you remember how the lot, Mike, you've been here before, how that water came down here? They get those other 52 lots built, Grand Valley's going to be pulling water again. And so all you got to do is take a look at it, and you can see it, like that one driveway there on Ryan Road. They've got that thing dammed up so much, it's terrible. And I drove by, I looked in there the other day, and there's a big old tree that's stuck in a block of the drains now, where the water can't get through. Then, you know, and besides not just wanting somebody up there, if you're going to do anything at all, just give it to her. Don't annex us in and bring all this junk up there. I know you're not annexing me with the property, just get her away from some kind and let her move up there. Don't have nothing against her or anything, but this is my thoughts on it. I've worked for 45 years and people that's worked, you know how hard it is to make a living. And man, I've been there 25 years, I love this place. I probably got more to say, but I can't think of anything right now, but thank you for listening to me.
Anyone else supposed to address the board or the public hearing?
My name is Dan Nix, N-I-X, 1319 Northwest Golf Field Drive, Grand Valley, Missouri. My feelings on the annexation, it should not go through regardless of what your big plans are. The main reason is that the city administrator is being paid by the taxpayers, and she doesn't want to live amongst us. And so she wants to live out 12 acres where she doesn't have to associate with the taxpayers that pay for her living. And it's going to add extra cost and already has added extra cost to the city with these other engineers and looking at this. And if she didn't want to live in the city, then she doesn't need to be our city administrator. It's just going to be a more burden on the city. This gentleman that just spoke, the problems that it's going to take to develop that and everything else, and we haven't gotten development that hadn't continued on. So we do not need to annex this land.
Good evening. My name is Rosalyn Schwelman. I live at 31804 East Stony Point School Road, Grand Valley, Missouri, and I'm in the county. I wrote a letter to all you Aldermen, and based on the facts that I have found since I wrote the letter to you, I have realized that the purposes for the city to annex are different than the purposes for an individual to be annexed. So all that stuff that I wrote ahead of time is now null and void since I have learned otherwise. My only complaint and objection to this is that I do not feel that the annexation to fulfill a job required is necessary.
Good evening. I'm Pete Chartel, 820 Ryan Road, and my only reason in addressing the board is to take a look. I live down at the bottom of the hill. Right now, my driveway is the recipient of all of the water runoff from Ryan Road and everything else that's up on that hill. And I'm scared to death actually about the prospect of opening up things for Grand Valley right now because, yes, I believe that our administrator has great intentions of building a single house up there. Hey, that encouraged me because that would be far less runoff than if they continued that road back and added a whole bunch of other lots. But are there any assurances on that? You know, that's what has me concerned because I don't think one house is going to add enough water to scare them. But should her plans change, should she decide, well, I don't really need 14 acres, let's sell off 10 of them and put up another 30 houses? It scares me because Ryan Meadows, I think even talking to the city engineer, the drainage was not done in any, well, in any fashion. And to continue that on up the hill and extend that and add more runoff, my driveway right now, I'm watching my front yard disappear a couple, two or three feet a year. And I don't, and it's getting closer to the driveway. I am going to be watching that, I think, start to crack. It's all because of all the water that comes down there, has to hit a bend at our front property and is washing it away. So I am very concerned about anything that's going on up above. If you do go ahead and vote for annexation, you've really created a situation where, as I said, if she changes her mind, decides that she didn't like it up there after all, doesn't need as much property, or just for whatever reason doesn't go ahead, you've opened this up for development by putting it within the city limits. Right now in the county, the prospect of getting 25 houses up there is not going to happen. But within the city of Grand Valley, if it is zoned and if it is part of the city limits, I don't see a real reason that you have to stop something like that if it came legitimately. And that is what concerns me. I don't know if there's such a thing that you can put a set of conditions on this or some assurance that you can go through and say, we're going to engineer this so that no more water runoff comes down and washes away my front yard. But if you can, that's what I'm looking for. And I hope that that will be considered. I guess it just really would like more assurance that it winds up being one house. If so, then more power to them. Welcome neighbors. That's my comments. Thank you.
Anyone else supposed to address the board?
Chuck Johnson, this is Levin Cross Creek. When I read the ordinances or the regulations about the annexation, it said there was supposed to be a full disclosure on what the cost of this was going to be to the city, what the city would receive in exchange for it. Now, you said this is a single-family, I assume it's going to be zoned R1. I'm certainly hoping it isn't zoned A1 where there's agriculture, because I'm certainly hoping there's an agricultural, around regular agricultural within the city limits. And also, I'm not, you know, upon people paying a lower tax rate if it is zoned A1. But I am curious as to what it's going to cost the city, what the city's going to have to pay for it. If it costs the city more than the city gets in return, I don't think it's right to annex that just so that she can get a position here in Grand Valley and doesn't supposedly live
Carrie Beebe, 713 Short Horn, Grand Valley, Missouri. I would just like to say, as a former Alderman, I do believe this is totally wrong, and I think that she normally took the job at a very high pay scale, and therefore she should comply with what we already put the criteria as to. But I think it's given a very poor perception for her to ask this from the board or from anybody, because as public knows and former mayors, we all have to be here in the city limits. So it's a very poor perception. I think she's put out to the public, and it's not hidden off very good from what I know about and what I hear from just talking to people. So I ask that you guys do not vote for this, but I think it's wrong. She normally took the job with a very high pay scale, knowing what she's going to get paid, she could have found something inside the city limits. So if you guys vote for this, I'll be very disappointed, and I agree with Dan Nix when he put in the paper very clearly. If you vote for it, next time there's a Alderman's meeting or election, I would ask that they vote for the people that did not vote for this or voted for it, because I'm totally against it. She normally took the job knowing the criteria. I do not believe we can just annex and put three of them. I realize that we annexed Tom Hightire's property last year, but he'd been involved in the city before, he's been a school superintendent, he's lived here many, many years. He did for a personal reason, not to obtain a job to stay here so that they have it. That's the difference. So I understand there's a philosophy of both ways of looking at everything, there's always two sides to every story, but this is not a good reason to vote this story that she's presented, and I totally disagree, and I would be very disappointed if you guys further agree with going with this in the direction she's asked.
Good evening. My name is Sandra Brons. My address, 7002 Ray, South Buckner Carson Road, Oak Grove, Missouri. I just have a couple of questions. Through listening to everybody here tonight, I want to know how annexing this piece of property into the city is going to benefit the city? So far, the only thing I'm hearing is benefits for the city administrator, not for the city. I see the city putting out costs for this. They have already hired a senior planner and a consulting engineer. This is more expense. What is the benefit for the city to do this? Again, my concerns is the same as some of the others. What guarantee do we have that the wording on this is a single-family dwelling? What's to keep it from being 32 single-family dwellings? We, our property is adjacent to this property. We've lived out there for 25 years. We love living in the country. We don't want houses just right next to us. If we wanted that, we would move to the city. And that is, one of our major concerns is that what if in two years she wants to move on or have, you know, sell some of the land off to a developer or whatever? And it's just a great concern of ours that, you know, we don't want houses right up. I mean, Ryan Meadows is close enough, and, you know, we just fear damaged our property and what have you. But my biggest thing is, what benefit is this going to be for the city? I realize from the property line on, bring sewer in, water in, all that is her expense. You know, when we built out there to send letters out, to send certified mail out, we had to do that because our property is not adjacent to a Jackson County road. And that was our expense. That was my time to go to the courthouse and look it all up, and that was our expense. And at this point, I don't see that this is her expense. But the main thing is, how's this benefiting the city?
I have seven questions because we're supposed to, all my questions will be answered. Is that what you said at the beginning? There were rules about questions?
If they're relevant to the annexation.
Absolutely. Number one, there have been two annexations that did not occur. Unfortunately, Richard Smith is not here. He didn't feel comfortable coming unfortunately because of different things that have happened. But there was an annexation, which I'd like the Aldermen to look into. He told me off of I-70, and it did not occur because Oak Grove contested it. And then there was another one when I spoke with former Public Works, there was another annexation. So not all annexations do occur in Grand Valley. Remember, so I'd like that to be looked into. Number two, when Jackie Carlson spoke, she just gave the benefits. When you get a study, it gives the positives and the negatives, so could we also hear the other side, like maybe, you know, what are some of the negatives to the city on that? Number three, there was a waiver brought out. If legally she could accept a waiver and take this out of the conflict completely, could the Alderman give her a waiver, maybe charge her a tax, but give her a waiver so that myself and people in the county do, you never have to worry about 36 homes, 45, whatever the number is, being built up there? And if she does sell, then there is a potential, because now it's zoned city, that there could be 36 homes. At the bottom of the hill right now, we've almost lost our driveway. Luckily, the last person who was with the city, he came out, Jeff, and he did some rock that has helped, but we've lost more and more. Two years ago, I started the petition, two years ago against this annexation, two years ago, right across the street at 811 Ryan Road, his backyard flooded. He's about seven feet up. When the city came in, the creek was leveled. Now there's a seven-foot waterfall drop. Also, his sewer pipe is exposed in Grand Valley. Grand Valley came out and said they were going to look into it, it never occurred. They said they were going to look into my driveway, they did come out, they were very good, they tried, and I do think they tried. But if this gets annexed and there are 36 homes up there, I will receive all the water. My neighbor to the east lost his driveway in that heavy rain. Also, for the record, I'd like to put on that 811 did file a letter two years ago and his backyard flooded, threatening to sue the city if his backyard floods again. We get some of the most horrendous rains in a short amount of time. In fact, in the news in Holt recently, they hit the record for the most amount of rain ever in a certain amount of hours. So when you get rains in Missouri, they come quick and hard, that's what we're concerned about at the bottom of the hill. And yeah, we picked theirs, I realize we picked that property, but if there's 36 homes and the water's already not right, is there something that we can have as a waiver to say, hey, she says she just wants to build one home. If anything should happen, if she sells that, it can only be one home. Then it takes it out of the problem with the county and us at the bottom of the hill. So I'm asking you to look into that. And I already said about Jackie Carlson, I didn't hear one negative thing. I think the necessary and proper development, this is proper development for self-interest, this isn't for the city. This is for one person. I think if you're going to take the whole city into account, you need to take Ryan Road where all the water comes. This is for one person. Conflict of interest is the next thing I wanted to address. Is there going to be a conflict of interest in construction? Because she's in charge of everyone, making $115,000, the biggest salary in the city. That's our biggest salary, correct? I think it is. Our biggest salary. Isn't there a conflict of interest? She's in charge of all the Public Works people when it's being constructed. So I think there's conflict of interest there that I would like, you know, answered, if there's going to be a conflict of interest, what's going to be done on that? And then debris. When the big rains come, you say, well, keep it clear, keep it clear. Well, when the big rains come, you cannot quicken up, get those trees up. That's what caused that driveway and all the rock, I mean, borders moved two years ago. And that debris comes, and you can't get it quick enough because of the water, and then someone could get really hurt, and, you know, you have a debris problem with those heavy rains. And, oh, the next question is, coal barn. Reading in the paper, there's, I guess, Mr. Barton is interested in working on cars. Does that involve paying, because I think there's code restrictions on coal barns in the city? So if we annex it, are they allowed to then have a coal barn and work on cars and you're not allowed to, cities don't like that answer? And I think that's it, thank you for your time.
I'm here at the Sony, nervous, that is Sarah Hawke, over for five minutes in the valley. I'm speaking, my dad's not here, Richard Smith, he goes to the Capitol. I see nothing in this that benefits Grand Valley. I don't, I mean, if someone wants to annex this, great, which is great, but as the one you keep talking about, you know, just really, you know, it's going to put citizens wrong. I have seen many cities that want this. Grand Valley has the highest property actually. Who wants that? I wouldn't want to live in within, if I lived outside Grand Valley, I don't want to live in Grand Valley. Wouldn't it have benefited more, Grand Valley more, if property we bought was then within limits? I think it would have. If you're talking about space, there's a home outside, it's within limits, and it's still outside. With an almost six-bedroom house, ten acres. Wouldn't that have been better than to try and go to the cost and the extent of the time that we're having, than to go and annex that property? I see this as nothing as something for a person's own, but someone who's supposed to be working for Grand Valley, to be there and to help Grand Valley, that, yeah, I see it as something that someone is serving themselves. And I'm not really intrigued, taking into consideration the people, or the people, and how it affects that. And I would really like to know if it's really taking into consideration all these people who have stood up here and said, hey, this is not what we want. This does not benefit them. I just said, definitely with this, I really know this, that I really feel that this is not, not, we don't want this at all.
Anyone else supposed to address the board?
My name is Dr. Bradley, I'm from New York West, ordered by company, orders south east, construction property, like, I'm glad I'm in the department, been in the area, thirty-seven years. Parents grew there, well, in high school in the city. I'm a junior high in the city, played basketball, played football in the city. I'm a merchant in the city. Don't think I should possess any of this city. If someone was to build a single-family, occupancy family dwelling, twelve acres in the city, and they come in, there would be an annex, do you think? They want twenty-eight, but there's a number to follow. I don't want to be annexed. If this property's managed, is ordered by company, according to the person over here, then my property can be annexed because it's a global property, it's a city property. I don't want to live in the city. I've lived in the country a long time. That was in the war. And I'm not moving. I live it here, and I live here. My son's going to live here, he's right back there. It's two. And I implore the board not to do this. There's nothing personal about this person, this petition, in this situation. If she wants to build a single-family dwelling there, I'm all for it, I've felt for myself. It doesn't need to be annexed to do that. It doesn't need to be annexed to do that. She can build a company, a house of flying on twelve acres, and that'd be great. A welcomeer, which is why I was welcomed here when I was twelve. There were five-hundred-and-fifty people living in the city there. And if this gets changed from county to city, and it goes into some sort of a situation where there's thirty or forty houses up here tonight, which, by the way, I haven't heard one person from this room come up and say a positive thing about this. It's all been against it, every one of us. And we don't live in the county anymore. And I pay taxes to support the school. And I'm, my son's going to go to school here. And hopefully do the same thing that I did, because you know my attitude. But I really don't think this is the best interest. I mean, there's no reason to do it. There's no reason to do it other than the two or three reasons we've already heard today, tonight, and the city administrator, after the movement of the city. So I want you to, when you can take a recess, I want you to please consider everybody you've heard tonight. Everyone of you, okay? Thank you.
Anyone else supposed to address the board? Do you need your address, or we're at the address?
Fine. Three-two oh-one oh East Stony Point School Road, this is Grand Valley, sixty-seven.
Anyone else supposed to address the board? Same down, we'll close the public comments section of the hearing. At this time, I think we'll take a short little recess with Mr. Gordon. Try dropping everything down. It's horrible, I'm going to say, if I have, so it's been about three minutes or so as we sort it all out, and we'll come back and address this.